We'll call for the public hearing on fiscal 21 budget. I have no one registered to speak on the budget. Is there anybody that wants to speak?
All right, I will call. Wolf here, Coons.
Here.
Alessa.
Here.
Brown.
Yeah.
And Jennifer is absent.
We'll leave the public hearing for the budget and open until we get to that panel on the agenda. So that will be the person that are asked. So we got open until that end, but I'm doing it. Ask them again if they want to. With that, bang the daffodil again. Call for the regular May 14, so we can still do this. Do you want to call?
All right, you, uh, Coons.
Here.
Alessa.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wolf here, and Jennifer is absent.
Welcome everyone to the meeting. Firstly, on the agenda, it was under welcome is to. For comment and Stephanie Edmonds, uh, registered to speak today. Stephanie?
Yes.
She's got her normal five minutes.
Okay, I don't even know what that one, so.
It's okay.
Right, you want me to come up here?
Yeah.
That one's okay.
Yeah, normally there's a, we have, we have not gotten a podium back yet.
No, that's fine.
That way you get caught by the microphone as well, so.
Oh, okay. Um, so I'm actually not speaking, um, from something that I wrote. I was asked by Lori and Mike Newerberg, um, to read something.
Okay.
Uh, because they couldn't be here today. So, um, and I'll preface this sort of, you know, obviously, this legislation that came through yesterday, we know that. So this was written before that. Um, on Sunday, our school administration made the reckless decision to end mitigation strategies that reduce the spread of COVID. As we as parents receive less than 24 hours notice, that when we sent our kids to school the next day, it would be to classmates without masks, without small cohorts, and without quarantines and contact tracing, even when directly exposed to COVID. The new COVID variants infect children more easily and cause more serious illness, and we now know that thousands of kids are burdened with long haul COVID, symptoms that go on for months without end. The administration not only chose to put our children in harm's way, they did so with essentially zero notice appearance. This is totally unacceptable. The administration based their decision not on science, but on flawed local guidance. The CDC clearly states that unvaccinated individuals need masks in order to interact safely. All elementary school students and many older students are unvaccinated and should therefore be masked. Students are tired of wearing masks. That's understandable. But it helps to understand the science behind how they work. Just like football helmets and other safety measures, they do not completely eliminate risk, but greatly reduce it. Masks are very effective at keeping virus-laden respiratory droplets contained within them, but are only particularly, partially effective at keeping airborne virus particles out. Masks protect the people around the wearer more than the wearer themselves. The understanding of science is how I know this policy change puts my unvaccinated nine-year-old daughter's health at risk, even if she continues to wear a mask. A vaccine is expected to be ready for ages two to 11 in the fall. We owe it to our kids to expect them to wear masks until they have the opportunity to be fully vaccinated in the fall, and then they can all unmask in a way that speaks to the spirit of Solin, back and better together.
Thank you, Stephanie, for bringing that up. First thing on the, or next up on the agenda is celebration of students, the wall match art show. I think we did very well at the art show.
We do, we linked it, uh, without bringing in all the, all the students, uh, their busy schedules. We wanted to link their, their art show, so I would, um, recommend that, um, if you have an opportunity to go to our, um, board agenda, you can click on it and you can see, um, all the, the very talented students that we have here at Solon. And, um, I think, again, we really cleaned house when it came to awards and the wall makers. As Mr. Cozen's program continues to do exactly everything that.
No, it was kind of nice because it was in Montmoren, so Casey and I were able to, to drive up there, what, a half hour and just kind of see how, how it's laid out. We'd not been to one prior, so. Really nice little spread of artwork on our side of the wall makers.
It was four, five years ago that they had in Solon, correct?
Could have been five years earlier.
They, we got, they got somebody off the conference, so they asked for a volunteer. So be a place.
And also kind of just packed out and then said.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Those are all excellent. They do just such a great job. They're also proud of the work they do in that program. I don't think things are just amazed at how, how good they are.
Again, we can't forget to share on this. Next, well, but before we move on, I just, I tend to say about, uh, what we appreciate about Mr. Cozen. You can see he's got, um, very talented students, um, are in his class, but he really grows a passion too for a part of everyone. We have talents from no talent to loads of talent taking his class. He accepts them all and encourages them all to have, have an art class. If you go into his classroom in any one block, he may have our one student sitting here, pottery students will click, you know, over here in advance, our students here, and he's working with them all just to include as many, um, people in those electives as possible to draw that, that level. And so it really is a, a program that majority of our kids, Zach, correctly performed, take, take an art class before they graduate.
Yeah, I'd say it's probably close to 9%.
Yeah.
About that.
Yeah. And then I also want to, as a celebration, um, we went ahead and, um, yeah, it's, we went ahead and did a story. I'm sorry. And now we just computer here. Wanted to bring your attention to a story we have on our website. And, uh, we put it out on social media, and that's our, our, um, industrial tech program. And, yeah, there's a story, we do have industrial tech in this school, um, district. Five years ago, or six years ago, when we opened up the, uh, the new center for the arts, we had this tremendously large back room where we build sets. We decided it'd be a great opportunity for, um, students to start learning how to build those sets, and then we'd expand it on. Keith Neuster is our instructor. He does a great job. There's always a, when we first started class, I think we had, uh, four periods out of the 16-block year, and we're up to seven now. We could just, more and more students will want to take this. And so if you go to this, uh, story, you'll see, again, the products that these, uh, students are, are making. And then we've got several of these students, and this, these are introductory courses that take you to Kirkwood into their ACE Academy. Their ACE Academy being, uh, architectural construction and engineering. And beyond that two-year ACE Academy in Kirkwood, you can go on and get a construction management degree. I think we have four students graduates, uh, recent graduates that are at U and I right now, obtaining that construction management degree. So just wanted to celebrate the program, that, uh, our industrial tech program and the, and what Keith is building there.
His courses do not have college curriculum, right? They're just introductory to get into Kirkwood, is that?
Correct, okay, correct. They're the, they're like the prerequisites in for the ACE Academy perfect, correct? Thank you.
All good. Next up is administrative reports. At that time of year where we look at this.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring your attention, you've got a hand out there on your, on your desk. This first, uh, page is just a really broad perspective of our ESSR dollars. ESSR stands for the elementary secondary school relief pack. Uh, this came about due to, uh, the pandemic. Uh, our first ESSR $1 came late summer, uh, right before the school started. Uh, we got $28,000. These funds were based upon, uh, size and, um, SES.
And this, that will remind us that we get the ninth worst, um, entire state permanent district.
Yeah, yeah. District's much, much smaller than us. We'll get three, four, or five times as much as us. Uh, it's just based on formula. So our first one was $28,000, and we spent all of that on thermal thermometers, masks, gloves, plexiglass, electrostatic sprayers, disinfectants, cleaning supplies, everything that we needed to, uh, implement our return to learn plan as far as mitigation. Uh, then a second wave came, uh, ESSR $2, and we, we got $99,000 from that. We purchased, um, about 120, um, laptops. We, uh, we purchased, um, access points that we could use throughout the district and access points that we give families that were home either on quarantine and didn't have strong cable acc, uh, um, internet access, or students that, uh, enrolled in Adventum and needed, uh, more powerful internet access. Software, Zoom licensing, some Adventum seats. That's how that money was spent. And then there's, um, ESSR $3 that we, we received or will receive, we will receive, we have received, we have $223,000. And that we have two years to spend. And we're going to, again, apply that to our return to learn plan and devote a lot of it to mental health. So we will be using over two years. Uh, we are actually going to add a college and career transition counselor at the high school in partnership with Kirkwood, which will free up our high school counselors to devote much more time to mental health. We're going to add more technology in the district, uh, continue those, uh, Adventum seats and those Zoom licenses, and then set aside a little bit for extended learning. Uh, extended learning, Jen and Sam are here to talk about what that looks like in summer at the K3 level, but we'll also explore maybe after school, um, throughout the year if necessary, for that money. So that's how we're gonna spend that money. And then I wanted to briefly talk about, um, we have our CIAC, goal areas, academics, post-secondary, social, emotional, mental health, and school improvement. And you can see the goals that we have under each of those strategic planning areas. We actually, our school improvement advisory council, uh, our community group that we meet with three times a year. Uh, when we met with them in February, we invited about 35 students to join us, grade 612. They gave us feedback. You can see the questions that we ask those students. Well, learning opportunities are preparing for your future. What are things your teachers do to make you feel welcome and, and, and create a sense of belonging? What do your teachers do to help you? And what can the school do to make your experience even better? Now, from all that feedback and from, uh, from an analysis, we pulled out some themes. Um, one, seek opportunities to expand our partnerships with Kirkwood. Create a point person to focus on career and academic planning. Expand our mental health supports. Increase opportunities for teacher support in and outside the classroom. And then review and implement practices that were highly successful this year to the pandemic. And so based on that analysis, um, actions that we'll be taking and where we'll be devoting some funding to is, again, we're adding that career and, um, college and career transition counselor so that we're able to expand, uh, mental health supports for kids. We're also going to utilize two categorical funds, teacher leadership and our at-risk. And we're going to, the physician that we have at the high school, Jake Munson, the success coordinator, that at-risk person, we're going to add a, a half FTE at the middle school to free up that counselor and devote more time to mental health. We are purchasing 275 additional tech devices. So between this year and next year, we're adding 775 new devices to our district. We're going to have more devices at the middle school if we have students. The students really like the online platform that we use, having access, being able to look ahead, having all that curriculum in their hands. And then, of course, Zach and his team, they're creating a kind of a hybrid schedule, from what they learned this year at the, at the, um, high school, that will actually designate teacher office hours during the contractual day. So that students, uh, will have more availability, more access to them. So that's where our fundings have been devoted and, uh, based upon our strategic plan goals and based upon feedback from, uh, our 612 students and, and CIAC members.
Davis, whenever we have kind of these goals and analysis, it's nice to have a plan to see how they work. You know, so what sort of things are we thinking about? Like, when we find out how many students are using this.
Using.
Uh, meeting the teachers whenever, you know, I mean, I mean, just, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's one thing to have a goal, but it's another thing to be able to measure it a year from now.
And what we do is with each of those goals, we develop an action plan that they ask, identifies what a success looks like, and how are we going to measure that success?
Perfect.
So that's what the principals are working on right now.
Perfect.
And, and that's how we'll spend June.
Finalizing, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Focus on, okay, all right, well, I mentioned summer school a little bit, uh, while I, um, I can talk too much about it. I'm gonna let you, you talk about it.
Are the sites not working?
How's that?
No.
Oh. It's, it's with, let's see, it's with. There's gotta be something. You know, there's something wired up here. Last time I forgot to plug in the mic. Just come, just come there.
Yeah. You're gonna do it without it, right?
I mean, I was gonna have it on my phone. All right, well, I'm Jennifer.
I'm Sandra White. And this is our seventh year for meeting the summer school program in Lakeview. And we're just gonna share a little bit about some past data, um, some things that we've put in place this year because it's been a little bit of a unique year. And just, uh, that how it works. Let me go to slide two. Um, the purpose for summer school, why it's established, is our students make so much awesome growth throughout the school year and their reading. Our teachers work so hard to get them where they are. But to make sure that in the summer, we want to prevent that summer slide, and the goal is just to maintain, um, all the growth that they made. So like kindergarten, if they leave at a level D, the goal would be to come in then in August at a level D. So Jen and I typically start planning in like February. Um, and we start looking at data. So we look at a couple different data points. We look at, um, the FAST, which is our statewide literacy assessment, which really just focuses on words per minute. It's not quite as much value there as our benchmark assessment, which gives a better picture of the whole reader, and we can get a lot more data, um, and really analyze their reading, their errors, their self-corrections. Um, so we'll start looking through all of that, and we'll continually look in March. And again, we'll also look, um, in May, as school's getting done, uh, for students to qualify. So this year, we've actually had the most number of students qualify, the most attending. So we've had 89 students that qualify, and there are 51 students that will be attending, um, this summer, so.
And those numbers aren't drastically, I mean, different, I would say, from year to year, but of course, we expected them to be a little bit higher, obviously, with school closure happening before.
I was gonna ask about the how much is that is, because I know we had a, um, last year, we did down the opportunity last year, and we had that slide, it was kind of from March to, yeah, we, I knew we had, you guys have done a lot of work. We're gonna catch them off, but I want to see how much of that is current story up there. We still, and we're not as far as we would have liked to have been, so we're gonna make these about.
Yeah, right. And the next slide kind of talks about that. So this is, um, I mentioned that the goal is to maintain. So this is our data. Obviously, last school year, we did, so July and August, it was supposed to be 20 days, and then we had the Rachel. So really, it was only 16 days. Um, so you can kind of see at the bottom of the data from the school closure to when summer school started. We had 50% of the students that attended summer school last year actually went down, um, in their reading level. And then we had 36% of students maintained and 14% of students made growth. Um, so then we, from the start of summer school to the end of the program, so 16 days, we had no students go down. Uh, we had 23% maintained, which is the goal, and we had 77% made growth, um, from where they came in. So definitely hitting that goal where we want, you know, the maintaining and even have students growing prior to entering the next year.
And this data being from last summer, we had, um, masks, and we have kids coming in person, but then we did have a virtual option for some students who are in compromised. Okay, so for this year, we have four weeks. Um, as Sam mentioned, we like to determine who qualifies, um, waiting benchmark a little bit more because benchmark tells us their reading level, and it tells us about how they are as a reader in terms of comprehension, accuracy, and fluency. Whereas the, um, FAST assessment, which in K1 we can pull some information for, but in 2-3, it's really about how fast a student can read, so there's not enough, um, information there to tell us about them as, as a whole reader. So we really like to look at that benchmark assessment. Um, and this year, we have four weeks for the students based on the benchmark assessment, um, coming to summer school, but then the kids who also fall on FAST but not benchmarks, what other state assessments we're just talking about, those students will still be able to come for two weeks, and then we have a plan, um, to send them home with some at-home support that we'll talk about in a couple of slides. Um, it's two sessions, so if you're teaching summer school, most likely you teach, um, one group for an hour and a half, and then the second group immediately following for an hour and a half as well. And then within that session, there's usually about seven kids, but it's broken into two groups. So really, the teacher teaching at the table is three students usually, um, which is nice because it can make their instruction very individualized based on what each student needs. Um, while there might be seven in the room, they'll rotate, you'll give them a task to do independently to practice what you talked about at the teacher table. They'll work on that while you pull the other students out and really teach to their needs. Um, we use Level Literacy Intervention or LLI, so I, not last summer, this is before, a handful of us went, um, to Missouri, and we did a training on a level literacy intervention, and then we brought that information back, um, and trained the teachers on it as well. So while we've been using that program for a while, I feel like we're using it with a lot more fidelity now, and we're also using it responsibly for what our students' data is showing us. So we did add a little bit of prep time, um, to the summer school teachers' plates this year just because now that we really know how to take that curriculum and not necessarily use it as a script, but use it to tailor the instruction to each student. It does take a little bit more time on the teacher part, but it's more beneficial for students, which is why we added that there. And then the reading record data, which is most similar to that benchmark assessment we were talking about, gives us a real view of the student's instructional level and independent levels reader. So we're able to use that data that their teachers provide us with, plus that data to progress monitor them throughout the summer school program to make any instructional changes necessary. Um, and we host it at Lakeview, um, so that the, uh, the ASP students, if they are doing that program, they're still at the summer reading program as well.
So, um, this year, we will have six certified elementary teachers in June teaching summer school, and then we kind of have to change some things for August, and we'll have two teachers in August. But again, with some at-home support for those students that are attending, um, in August. So teachers, they get, um, there's contact time with students, it's three hours a day. So they've got the hour and a half session and the other hour and a half session. And like Jen just mentioned, then they'll have 45 minutes of prep time a day. So that's really where they're looking at student work, they're analyzing those reading records to best plan the prompts and exactly what those kids need, um, during the time with them. And every May, actually, maybe next Tuesday, we will meet with the tutors just to kind of talk, um, like a cal, calibration meeting to talk about, um, you know, how to best plan your instruction, just make sure that everybody is on the same page and the same, like, the high-density rotation. So the time they're not meeting with the teachers, here's some high-density tasks, you know, for writing or high-density tasks for word work. You know, read to self, listen to reading. Um, so that way, those kids are really reading for the entire hour and a half that they're there. Um, and also each teacher goes through, they're like a reading record training, um, and a level literacy intervention training, um, with Jen and Ori. Um, so we'll be meeting if there's any new teachers to summer school, we'll be meeting with them just to ensure, you know, fidelity to level the intervention and to help them best plan their instruction for all those kids.
It'll be nice too, because a couple of our teachers are new to Solon teachers, and this is the program we use for our literacy intervention, and so it's giving them that training and that before the school year starts. So they'll go in, ready to go, they're a little lower years, um, when they have that group within the classroom. So the changes for this year, um, we are doing for those students, again, like we mentioned, mentioned before, that just fell out on that FAST assessment, we're doing two weeks for them and then four weeks for all of the other students. Um, there's a couple of reasons for that. One, um, it was a little bit trickier to get teachers this year just because it's been a challenging year, and so teachers deserve and want their break. And so, um, some of those people who we usually get just would like to take this summer, and then they'll, uh, come back and rejoin us, um, when things become a little bit more normal. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we had teachers to support the kids that fell out on the assessment that we put the most weight on. And so those students have in-person teachers for four weeks. We choose to do it in June and then August to kind of end their year, extend it a little bit, and then give them a little bit of a boost before the school year picks back up again. Um, and then for those other students, they'll have two weeks in June, so they'll still be a part of groups, still have in-person teaching. And then we have a contact with, um, Celestial Books, and they have, um, given us an account for the FACE program, which is a program that gives us discounted texts to send home with students. And so Sam and I sent out a survey to teachers and just said, here are your students who only qualified for two weeks of summer school. What are they interested in? What is their reading level? So then we can get them a pack of 10, 15 books that will interest them and that are at their instructional level. And then we can provide the parents with that bag of books as well as a lesson plan template, some prompts to use at home, some things to continue their reading practice, um, that's designed for those students specifically so that if the parents would like to continue that learning at home, they're able to. Um, again, based on not just the student's level, but what the student's interested in as well. Um, we're also thinking that we might do a couple of video recordings or examples that we can give to parents so then they can see kind of what it could look like if they're working with their child at home. Questions?
I don't know. There are always questions. So 89 students technically qualified, 51, you said?
61.
Well, so what would reason be to not?
We have had some parents, swimming lessons often conflicted with our, so that is a fair one. Um, we have had a couple of kids drop out because masks are required, but that, as we talked about, is not, that's a state decision at this point. Um, and then we also have some, just like parents maybe not being able to work it into their schedules or their summer vacations. We really try not to have, um, we put in the letter, initial letter, that if you're gonna miss three or more sessions, we'd rather give your spot to a student who could benefit and be there the whole time so that we can make sure we're getting.
Well, that kind of is a bit too, how the communication is far the harder they follow up after that, so.
And you correctly performed it. It sounds like a lot, but, um, for instance, having the conversation in your room a couple of weeks ago, you had just wrapped up, uh, your intervention group. And your reading intervention group, your, your kids that you're working with for a level D.
I agree.
Listen, for any other district in Iowa, level D is not intervention. That's on end-to-end term. But, I, I mean, if you look at the curve here in Solon, it's way to the right. So, I mean, we've got the kids that were, that are coming to summer school. It's not that all of them are behind grade level, they just made it behind their peers. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, and, yeah, I just don't think they've done it. They've said really things, and it's done a lot, it has done tremendous job. That's why I just asked, how could they not when if you are a little behind, did you go on track, did you, I did a, a curve a little bit?
I think you asked this question two years ago, I think, but.
That's one of my, I remember.
Someone said no.
There's the thing stuck in my mind that, because the city guys there is that, um, or June, I guess, so.
And summer camps and family vacations are a big thing too, and we just can't, you know, we try to balance, okay, they're gonna miss four. Well, maybe we take them depending on how many, um, or how high the need is. Um, but if, you know, the program's only 20 days and they're gonna miss five of them, we really can't guarantee that we're going to meet the purpose, which is maintain that goal if they're not getting the full program, so.
Lessons really build on each other, that's the goal.
This is Kate.
You do a great job. As you can see, you're highly, highly successful.
Good.
You, you commit to small group. I mean, it's very visualized, small group. Yeah. Well done. It's a lot of work, so, you know, one of the reasons why I wanted you to come is so it would also give you a big thank you for putting this all together and overseeing the course.
Um, and it's really the teacher. I mean. Um, and it's really the teacher. I mean, we do the backend, so we're going to base our events, but they're the ones going in every day and lesson planning it and making it meaningful for kids, so. Let's tell them thank you.
Yes.
One quick question. Jen, what are you doing?
Maybe never. Uh, go out tomorrow, I fly out tomorrow, I have sun, so we close on our house in Iowa, city on two twenty-eight.
I was supposed to say thank you.
Thank you so much.
The Denver area?
Yeah, Denver area. Oh, yeah.
She's in the same town like you. It's sprawling out there.
Yeah.
You get the opposite of that, don't go off without the box.
So um, facilities, many we had oh, you can, you can fill us in a little bit, but we had met with uh, some students from the business class that had some really great ideas and.
Yeah, it was from a business management class and they presented um, essentially uh, they needed to address some type of safety concern with a um, a way to make money to help the concern. So what they thought was, how could we create some revenue to increase the safety within our park? And so they identified the goal would be to figure out a way to add spaces and change the spaces within our lot to an angled approach parking. Um, I know that we had actually had that quoted or bitted, we, we, we bid that out a few years ago to see what it would cost, how much it would actually reduce the number of spaces. And I think that was pretty substantial. Uh, I don't think it was the same way that these kids kind of envisioned it. So they kind of came up with this, this plan, um, which would kind of eliminate a lot of those um, grass spaces within the middle of the parking lot. You'd even add another uh, row of, of angle parking. Um, so that was kind of their big, their big vision and why was to, to be more safe, right? So they wanted to um, and they got some input from kids uh, through surveys. They wanted to see if you guys would be okay with us allowing seniors to purchase spaces. So they presented this to the, the facilities committee, um, seniors would buy parking spots that would become theirs for the entire year uh, during the academic day. And they would be able to park there regardless of when they, you know, had class, they always had their space coming back. The other piece of that was they'd be able to decorate it in some capacity. Um, we didn't really highlight what's that decoration. Well, they had a lot of great ideas, but I think the, the committee after the fact, they, they thought it'd be cool if we did just a, essentially painted however they wanted to paint it. Um, that was kind of their initial idea. I think there'd just be a lot of things we'd have to work through if we really just did it that way. So we talked about identifying color schemes, letting maybe come up with fifty different kind of um, identifiers that kids could use. We wouldn't want it to become some type of a, um, I don't know, we still want to turn it into something that's going to cause division, right? So how could we make sure that kids um, can have a space that's theirs, identify it, and they get to use it throughout the day? So then that money, we would save every year in an account um, to help offset the cost of changing the parking lot to be parking uh, in angled spaces. Also talked about adding speed humps. Um, I know a lot of districts will have those as their high school parking lots. Uh, I would be all for that, um, as long as it's, you know, we're able to pout snow and continue to take care of the lot that way. Um, so this group of four, these are sophomore or sophomore junior boys are a part of this. And they're, they're all for, we're going to meet again after the seniors are gone, because we're going to get some more input from kids. They would like to start this ball with kind of a pick your spot day, that they would facilitate and seniors would come and um, yeah.
And we, we talked about um, some ideas and feedback, JD read and as we, as we met, gave them some feedback. But one I worry was like, yeah, should give a blank slate, love and paint. So we talked about what if, how did JD's idea, what if we design, had templates. So they have Spartan head, um, a theater face, a music note, a football. And they could use those um, stencils to, so it was more uniform within to identify, um, they had a choice of like three colors of paint, you know, gray, orange, you know, white, just kind of more so it wasn't so. There's some ideas that we, we gave them to think about, um, some feedback uh, as they go back. So it's just kind of a kind of a dashboard brainstorm, you could say right now.
It was, I mean, it was a good, it was a great idea, just a lot of challenges and I think we talked it through and.
We've got a great art department, we've got a great industrial tech department, you know, they could be, create some stencils that we can use and, and things like that. So a lot of good ideas came out of it and they, they did an excellent job with them.
Yeah, they did a really good job.
Very confident, very, yeah.
How was our parking lot with all the, especially this year, right? There was a lot of people that wanted to fill it. Was it pretty good out there? I mean, it seemed like a lot of by.
No, I mean, not during the, those two blocks at school.
The two blocks, yeah.
The, the biggest challenge is just the safety when we were transitioning. That's why we tried to stagger things as much as possible. So it wasn't a mass exodus or a mass entrance, but um, I would say we've been fairly lucky. We had one really dirty bad that wasn't in the lot, it was up in the road, um, a couple other normal new drivers pulling into the spaces, because they're so tight. They're backing out because they're so tight.
So.
I think that reached a long time, yeah. And that's right, me, my, my spirit uh, got ahold of the company that paints ours and they did a knockup and when you anchor them, we lost a significant amount of spots and it's like, wow, sometimes uh, parking lot is pretty full and you see sometimes it has to have the up, Coach Miller's road. Receive that ground road parked all the way up the hill along the road and.
That's what we're also doing.
Okay.
So I think the, so we've got like the so
Yeah, we're just kind of giving them some feedback and they're going to get some more feedback from the kids and then we'll get that together about it.
And the transition
Yeah, part of what the seniors would do is their checkout would be fading their space black. That'd be part of that. And do like a breakfast. They have just basically no idea.
It's all playing game.
Seniors are super motivated.
They're not walking across the stage.
We're still a little removal though.
Yeah, but then you can design them where it's, it's almost like a
It's just a, yeah.
It's kind of a, almost square, where like, you know, it's big, it's not rounded, it's straight and then kind of straight so you can get up there. I was in a, worked twice for a month, uh, West Des Moines, a couple of weeks ago and they, I mean, they hadn't I mean, it was, it was like, oh, I'll be a left kid.
They drive a lot faster out than boys.
Baseball field was good too, that's facilities and.
That's, yeah, that's coming along.
Rain is slowing down.
Yeah.
They were hoping to finish the concrete this week, try to find a window. Opening game is Monday.
Exactly.
Um, I talked to Keith this afternoon, he still feels like they can get enough done, right? They can play Monday. If not, Casey has a reserve livery field, because that's two year old, so.
Well, Benny was just kind of getting finished up last night, from what I could tell. It didn't rain.
Okay, uh, next up is the concerned agenda. It's a long one, but uh, we might want to talk about it. If not, I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the concerned agenda as presented.
Motion by the Losa, second. Second by Wolf. All in favor of the vote, I say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion for the Americans. Congratulations to the Red in the past two twenty-one, Zach just got them approved for Sunday. They'll be happy tomorrow, right?
Be happy on Sunday.
They'll be happy that we took the rain thing off. First up is action items. Is anyone here who wants to speak on the budget? Hearing none, I will look to the motion to oppose the public hearing on the budget.
So we.
Motion by the Losa, second. Second by Cruz. All in favor of the vote, I say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion for the Americans. Having, we all say on the budget, not to forget, we have last month.
So, okay, thank you.
So. So we talked about this last month, it's basically just a change in the numbers, it's not an increase, it's just moving in the rounds and finishing the rankings, so. So that is one. Is there a motion to approve? So, motion by Cruz.
Second.
Second by the the discussion. In fact, we're keeping on track on top of this. It's a, it's a challenge to measure once a year. May is always the time to, to make sure we get uh, everything sorted out, so. Right, so. All in favor of approving the the final document as presented and published, in the present, aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion for the Americans. Uh, next up on the agenda is the school fees. And so there's not a whole lot on the initiative changes. I think the big one to call out, which probably else saw us, they all have their spare admission prices for their athletic events. And so ours are more up. So, um, which causes some shifts in things like the ten-month pass and the passes, so. That's where we're at on those. The discussion.
What did they say for reasons, just officiating and all the other expenses with it?
Track. It's been a long time since, I think they've applied to do on the law back. There was some, you know, on that, they weren't sure that they want, because I think there was, some schools were trying a different aspect, so they.
I always kept it clear too.
And state, you know, the state, the early batches kept going up, that's a spirit, uh, spirit to let the state charters go on that and what, uh, what the school term, so. I think, you know, the topic, I think that, that was just the, yeah, that was the student pass.
Student, this, this, in this.
I think the student base, I was going to put out, I think the decision was made between you and Casey, and remember that if the student actually passes saying, so we're trying to make sure our students can go, we're trying to keep that as, as early as we can. So the recommendation was to keep that the same level for against that we'll see the answers.
I'll make a motion to approve uh, school fees for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Motion by the Losa.
Second.
Second of all. She's just a touch facet. The other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the vote, I say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion for the Americans. Next up on the agenda is consideration of first student work, also two or three qualified student school representatives. Um, we talked about this, started a couple of years ago, we backed from ASB and uh, experiences of training in Iowa and some states around the country. It's a statewide thing where they have representation in the board for us, and so that's and so we've thought enough to kind of talk about it, uh, and so it's something that we want to, we want to do. Um, probably the ASBA that pushes them, probably about some of the statewide things, so you have the ASBA is kind of pushing, you know, how do we support a model that works to gain a national voice and, and some students perspective on this. Some educational topics. And so um, as well, I have just realized that kind of, kind of questions, questions on it, thoughts on it, so. You know, obviously some of the questions we had was just attendance, you know, if they're involved in stuff and first of all, one hundred percent for it, I think eight tenths of the children's voice representing other students, I'll take it all day, because a lot of times we feel, we know what they want. But until you hear it from their voices, you know, you really, you can see that perspective way different when we heard from them. But that would be the one thing, I mean, is it, is it a group that's a representation? So if one kid couldn't make it, someone else could, you know what I'm saying? So that's the part I It's a good question. I, I attended the session, but I talked to someone, this was important. What they kind of found is like going to struggle, having to go through a process to apply and it's like they already know what the schedule is. Thursday of the month or January through December, I'm giving the, to be free. So they kind of look at that. So they kind of self-select. That process, that's kind of what I told them, it's a decent condition that happened to me because they kind of, probably because they had very good luck at it so far. Because that was on my agenda as well. So we've got the PSYAP ones, it's, it's always just hard because as you're trying to get PSYAP together and you've got the student representatives and we've got a committee and we've got students, we're trying to find a kind of works. It's often hard to get the students that are in school here, who are there because they're, you know, other roles that they fill, but are not a so, you know, going in that they know on this night, I've got this requirement, so.
I would be more in favor of having a couple, just in case. If they're going through a test.
Because I don't I don't limit kids to, otherwise maybe the leadership roles are not filled because of that, limit their options. You know what I'm saying?
Would you have, uh, is it junior, senior? Those are the only two cuts, right?
The, the model that I tried looking for a little bit apart. It took a best name before we took it down the draft. The model that seems for the past, because seniors, they're busy, because it has left in the fall, the junior, junior year, and so it's from the junior year through the fall, their senior year. That way, as they finish off the school year, their senior, they don't have to
Yeah, that's a good point.
They have, they have to deal with it. And so you're really looking for those kids, students that are in that, in that junior senior year. To do that because you avoid somebody that, because you can turn off, they're kind of browned, you can understand, but what's going on at the school at the same time. Aren't focused on graduation for yet and uh, didn't anybody talk about using like the student council, who hearts is part of that, since they're already having that leadership role? I think that's what we do aside, I think it's, it's student council. So that's, that's what we want, that's where you want to problem.
Yeah.
To have a job rather than a leadership position over sitting down and off of that, so. They serve as a liaison back and they can go back to the student council. I think they're, they've got some of the things that, in the older side of these, they're not gathering what they can bring that perspective and the things that come.
So, go ahead. No, I was just going to say, so we get time to clean that up before next month too, so.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna edit some of the also anything that edits, uh, because there's a lot changed, so we're looking at the right now, it's raised as a least one, so I think we're gonna try, maybe one of those things where if you look at it, a couple of years in one, you have that commitment issues, like, oh, I can do it these months and then maybe if you want to ask, you know, but yeah, I think the idea was to not say you only have to do one. It's just a possibility, so. Looking at it, that was a, that was a, that was to try and make it more flexible. That's why I saw a number of policies, you know, it's maybe for that very specific reason not to you know, explicitly say that it doesn't have to be, it has to be someone. And then just, just sitting in the auditorium last night, going through all the senior stuff, is there, can we tie something to it? They're accorded for it, can they get, you know, I mean, do they get recognized as a senior? You know, I mean, because some kids, yeah, that's important too.
Yeah.
Uh, that's just a thought, I'm just, only because it happened to me last night, so.
And, and, and maybe you're familiar with some of those other districts, if they tie it to
or the frequent chat, and I, and I think the, it's a good question.
It is, yeah. Those schools do need something.
Right.
They have Eagle Scouts, we have, we have a lot, a lot of donations, so.
Some of one of the missions, that's a, I saw a bunch of social media, yeah, but
There's fun through the gown and then another. There's five through the Yon and then another three or four through the Mississippi Valley.
Jamie, what's?
I think it's a great, I mean, I think there are some challenges that we think we need to clean it up a little bit and figure out exactly what we want to do, but to get students to be involved and see how these kinds of things work too, is great. I think that there needs to be more students, young people that want to see how government things work, and this is a really great start for them to get involved and see if it's something that they want to be active in in the future after graduating, so I think it's a great idea. We just need to make sure we do it, you know, do it right.
I think, uh, one thing that, it's a good, it's a good opportunity, also, that's something we're actually, that, that, so then, that they're previous to sign petition, you know, considering that, uh, Dr. Crystal Principal, we call, the, the guidance, um, yeah, so it's true, we have, uh, some staff, we're starting on, so.
Yeah, I like that. Twenty-five students, and you gotta go, the community, the district staff, I think it looks good.
Including staff, that's the first one, I think helps to make sure. What, committed, make that one assume responsible, because that's always good, that, you know, for this, when they get to the learner's room, they're driving the car, or so moving on to those conversations that I've been saying.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the first review, uh, as presented, and then we can work on that.
So then the members, that's one. So, motion by the law staff to approve the first review. Second, second by Cruz. All those, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries now, say. Yeah, his last few actions, uh, building handbooks, uh, anything decoration, whatever, this is our opportunity, we have one here, uh, there's any, we have seen that, uh, we want to, uh, presentation on, uh, updates on year to year, and so, um, the principals do work each other, work better, we, we should probably, you know, years ago, we used to approve these and they're really conservative documents, and so, um, we want, uh, call it the middle school out there. We've issued that limitation of their policy, so. Definitely, we've got college concerns, uh, we've, we've got, kind of, the next couple weeks, share those with, uh, the public, going from there. Certainly, go from there, so, but I didn't see anything that was a concern at all, so. Um. Question on us. More warning, uh, Chris sent a song, you know, I've asked them. She wants us to watch, so, um. So we've got those coming up, so, um, and again, on the, uh, we will, uh, discuss those in, in June, I hope to the morning for those that are here, and so, uh, for those who aren't, we'll leave our thoughts in writing, so Chris can turn them over. Uh, that was, you know, we, we watched them, so.
Did the RIT's scheduled with the city?
Sure. Yeah, it's almost, yeah, so, yeah, at the end, we'll get that, so we've got students that are keeping, and, uh, let's confirm who did it, and I can be there, you can be there, King.
I'll make it happen.
Yeah, I should be able to. As long as we get through that sort of thing. I'm hearing you morning, everybody, June second at, so it's that Wednesday, first Wednesday at five o'clock, is the, the city office, so. We used to do this all the time, and then they, we missed it this morning, then they got that back on the schedule, and so we've been talking about it and trying to find something with, it's just not, it's just not happened, so. For us, we'll be a book session, um, because we don't actually, uh, basically, five, five thirty, because they're ready, we can start at five thirty, so we will. We'll be wrapping up later, so.
So June second at five.
Nothing else. Jamie?
Um, and so one of the things that we kind of talked about, they just talked about early on, was just the, the capabilities that we're going to be able to increase some with the mental health. That's really is, makes me, at the high school, it's been kind of a struggle, there's so much going on, so I really like that we're going to be able to help there and in the middle school. I think the mental health thing is something we've talked about for a long time, but haven't gotten to actually do, you know, something big, and I feel like this is a really good start on helping alleviate the pressure on the mental health professionals that we have in our school, so that is something that is, I'm glad that we're finally doing something there.
That's. Yeah? First of all, I mean, I appreciate, I mean, the art, from high school counselors, they just get inundated with schedule. You know, I mean, and this will be nice, and, you know, that will free that up. I, I think for me, it's just the amount of talent in this community, you know, you look at through those of our pictures, and I, uh, slash ten hours, it's just that. Incredible, you know what I mean?
Been doing crazy.
Yeah, I mean, I know my art talent, so, uh, so it's just, I, I've never ceased to be amazed by the talent of our students. And, uh, and then not just their talent, but just compared to other students, you know, a lot of first places and two, third places at the Walmart, uh, just a testament to our art capability, and, uh, and you're actually right, Josh, it's a whole door, we'll take it, like, we'll help you guys.
That's good to see that, I was thankful we did that. I know he's done it years past, but it's good to see him. I'll do the summer school, I, I, once again, I, we saw the numbers last year when March, you know, kind of shut the school down, we had some significant drops. Not that five and ten percent slide, but we were thirty, forty, you know, upwards of the fifty, but they, they worked hard to get our kids back, and I know it affected my nine-year-olds, so. Again, even just reading all summer, we were lacking on the comprehension side, they evaluate that and they can work it out, but, um, yeah, I think we got tremendous people that are running that program, and I think if you have the opportunity to take advantage of it, you gotta do it, so, it's good for them to present.
Thanks, I'll just go back to staff, right? Summer school, um. I think that they are welcome on for our students, like, that's, so we can greatly appreciate from our staff, and, and always, uh, also, that's how, make sure students have what they need, uh, in the, in the, so. That's all, so. Next item on the agenda is code session.
I'll make a motion to, to close session, I would go to section twenty-one, uh, five, one.
Motion by the law staff.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Uh, the zero point five. Motion by, last the second by Wolf, uh, you want Paul Ross?
Okay, you got it, Wolf. Yes.
No, yes, no.
Yes, sorry, you started getting, okay. Cool.
Yes.
A lesson.
Yes.
And ground.
Yes.
And Joseph's accent.
In this line. And that for the other room, okay, there's a slide, so that's, that's what I. So.
Okay. So you got thirty, you know, here.
No, so no research, I'm not going to store.
Yes, I take it over there, okay, and then you'll stop then, or climb over to. Okay, yeah.
Right, that's not where people were silent. I mean, I might have more, they put that up there.
Oh, okay.
Amounted with the men, just say COVID goals, because people are. You know, it's, it's the biggest thing.
People profess to. So, all right.